Hello, everyone. Welcome to the August 2023 Special Meeting of the Oak Hills Park Authority. We're gonna get kicked off because we are starting a little bit late. We have a quorum which will establish your attendance. And we do have some of the staff, especially Paul Alexander, the golf pro, who will join us a little bit later. But I'll call to order and let's start off with, as I said, attendance. And I'll just go in order of the folks that I see on my screen. And I'll ask you to just note with present or here when I call your name. So Alan.
Just about here.
Welcome and thank you for joining. I know there's special circumstances for you. Robert Stowers. Welcome Denise Brown.
Here.
And Richard Dellinger.
Here.
Okay, and Joe Androsco is here. So those are the five members present. Authority members present. We also have present. Mark Gartner, Jim Holliday, Jim Shell, and Paul Alexander. And we also have representing the restaurant. Don Masternardi. Excuse me. So established a quorum, we can go into item number two on the agenda, which is acceptance of the minutes from the 7/20/23 meeting. And I've been through them. I saw something really early on that should be addressed, which is in just the second paragraph, it states, Mr. Androsco noted that Denise Brown, whose term has expired. It should be, we should add Jennifer McAllister noted that Denise Brown and Jennifer McAllister, whose terms have expired, are admitted to the meeting. So just that change to add Jennifer McAllister to that.
Do I see a lot of corrections? Do you want them called out?
Yeah, if you'd like to.
Well, they had Mark Gartner at attendance with the Oak Hills Park members. Shouldn't he be down with staff?
Yep, that's what I have too. Yep.
Oh, hi, Mark. Okay. And then Jim Holliday's name is spelt wrong from where it's the report of the chair. It should have two Ls.
It's also up in staff. So Jim, do you want to state your proper spelling just for the record?
H O L L Y P A Y.
And then when you go down under old business, new business, they have Chairman Jim Androsco. So it should be Joe Androsco. And they have Alan's name spelt wrong. It has two Ls instead of just one.
Thank you Denise.
And I don't know if it matters, but on all the reports, except for Jim's report, like manager report doesn't say by Jim Holliday. And it doesn't say Mark Gardner for the controller's report and stuff. It just says the reports, but it does say it Jim Shell for superintendent. Those should be on there. You know. I don't know if that's just details that don't matter. But on the tennis committee, it says Mrs. Brown reported that the grant from State USTA, it should say Connecticut, C T USA. It says has been received. It has not been received. We're still waiting for it. It's been approved, but has not received. And then it says below that about Mr. Falsy feels competent, the funds that should be Hauzy, H A U, I think, L S E.
It's H U L S T.
Thank you. H U L. Okay. Well, those are all my corrections.
Thank you. Anyone else with corrections or comments on the?
Well, just a few name spellings. Sometimes they have the E D E L L for my last name, but sometimes it's D I L L. So I think there's three times they insert the I instead of the E.
Yeah, I'm just seeing it now.
Yeah, okay.
Two in the last page and one on a motion.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it's right.
Okay. Any other comments or corrections? Hearing none. I should have done this before. We started discussing them, so I apologize for the order mix up. But I'll make a motion to consider and approve the minutes from the July 2020, 2023 regular meeting. May I get a second?
So moved.
Okay. And I will just do any objection. Hearing none, any abstention? Hearing none, we'll consider these minutes approved. Okay. Moving forward, we will go on to public comment. And I do see one attendee.
I do as well. I'm going to allow them to speak.
Okay, we can promote them to speaker. Hello, I see an attendant, an attendee Lisa Bassoon. I hope I'm saying that right. Lisa, if you're on, we'd love to get public comment. We'd like to keep it to three minutes and please state the proper pronunciation of your name and your address, please.
Um, my name is Lisa Bassoon. It's L I S A B I S O O N. And I'm the GM of Smoke and Aces. I really don't have that much to say. This is my first time attending one of these meetings. I just want to let everyone know that we've been trying to do our best as far as like keeping the restaurant open and, you know, accommodating every, all the golfers. We did have some hiccups. We still have some hiccups with like finding staff. We lost a few members of the kitchen, so we were short staffed as of the moment. We started doing some breakfasts on the weekends. And this past Sunday was the last, was the only Sunday that we didn't do it because one of our, our only kitchen staff is, was sick. So we had to pretty much abort the breakfast that morning and then bring someone else in from our other restaurant to cook for the, for the day for the restaurant. So some people were not very happy about that, but we're trying our best.
Thank you, Lisa. I invite you to stay on and Mark, if we can keep Lisa on as a, you know, a speaker, I think that's fine. It's very relevant to the business of the park. So
Sounds good to me.
So Lisa, you're free. You're welcome to stay for as long as you'd like. So that was the only person I saw, Mark, confirm, please, that that's the only person I see for public comment.
There's no one else.
Okay. Thank you. And we can close the public comment portion now. And that brings us to the report of the chair and I'm going to care, keep it. Actually, I'm just going to move on through it. I think the report of the staff is much more important. Because they're the ones on the ground actually doing work and giving us the real updates for what's going on. I will congratulate all the winners of the championship. There's a bunch. There was a great email that was sent out. And I really enjoyed looking through all the pictures and seeing everybody and everybody looked just absolutely like they're having a great time. So that will be the end of my report and we can move on into management reports. We can begin with report of the general manager presented by Jim Holliday. Take it away, Jim.
Last month I reported I am meeting and introducing myself to lots and lots of people. I continue to maintain a pretty prominent visibility. I think Jim, Paul and Mark would agree. You have a very busy, excuse, we have a very busy operation. If I think about it, if I have anywhere from 275 to about 300 people at my house every day, it's never a dull moment. It's, it's, it's really very exciting. So I am more able after, well, in my second month to evaluate procedures. Evaluate staff members. All the while acknowledging that the systems in place work. I'm just finding that I am looking at it with a keener eye, if you will. I think then the most important thing that we did this month was to release a survey. I've been thinking about this for for several months and Alan and I have spoken about it several times and I had about 25 or 30 questions and with the help of some of the staff, Jim, Paul, some of the golf staff and notably Steve Shepherd. We pinned it down to 10 questions and released it about a week ago. We have got a pretty decent response. We have about 145 responses so far. We don't really have a very good sense as to who our audience is because our mailing list includes 4,852 names. We're pretty certain that those are not active users of Oak Hills. So we're in the process of winning that list to one that will have more value to us. We have extended the deadline for return of that information to September 1. Excited about finding out what people like and like and what they want. See as a club that really I did submit a couple of different reports. I hope that you've all had a chance to read them. The only thing, you know, the maintenance area specifically, besides everything is actually something that's on the, it's on the agenda, but Joe, maybe you'd like me to just touch on the HVAC situation now while I'm speaking.
I put it later in the agenda in case there was any action that we needed to take, but as I read through a backlog of emails, it does not actually seem like there's anything that we would need to decide because the capex budget has already been kind of set. But yeah, go, go, give it as an update because I do think it's a meaningful thing and kind of speaks to how we can approach updates to the physical plan.
Great. Well, the long and short of it is, is that I released the RFP to three regional vendors, one of whom we're meeting tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, one of whom we're meeting between 10 and noon on Thursday. So you are right to say that no action required. What we will have is a much better understanding of the entire system and all should be replaced within it. So I hope that we'll be making a recommendation for the September meeting to select one of the vendors and we will have our number. Is our innovative heating and cooling from Milford. Or walk and Milford. Hellas Air from Norwalk and Estacio Plumbing Heating and Air Conditioning also from Norwalk. They're all firms that have been in business for quite a few years and I think that some of them may have a slightly different approach. So I'm open the parameters a little bit on the, on the RFP. I think that's basically it. Thank you very much.
So Jim, has the scope of work been defined for this project or is it still a work in progress?
No, it has definitely been defined and, and is quite clear in the RFP. What I did find though, Alan, is that the first contractor did not include replacement of the hair coils. He did not say that it is necessary. Another vendor included it. So I thought that it made sense to include that. So yeah, it's very well defined, but there was something added after the second vendor when I.
Okay.
Jim, I think that's go ahead. Just two things. On your report, this, the second, the last paragraph ended with a no and nothing following. I wasn't sure what was following. That statement that you mentioned about the capital budget and areas of saving for this HVAC work. It says we found some savings, but no, and I didn't know what followed there.
I've been busted. I think that actually must have been a draft that, that was, that was released and I scrapped that whole sentence. So the capex budget is still not defined. We have not determined where we're going to plug the cost of the HVAC replacement. And most importantly, we don't have a place for yet because we don't know exactly what it's going to be.
And just one other thing, I noticed the tennis thing. I, you mentioned the last day is August 25th. I think it's actually the 27th.
It's this Friday. Yeah, okay, Sunday.
It's Sunday. Jim, just to jump, just to piggyback on that a little bit, we did meet and we did discuss several areas where it looked like we would have some savings where it would be able to make up for, for this additional HVAC work pretty easily. So I, while nothing has been exactly defined, I'm not concerned with having to already vote to increase the, the capex budget. We can get everything done just fine with the current budget that we just voted in.
Yeah, because I actually did meet with you guys to go over the couple of budget and we were able to find, I think 20,000, I mean, I'm not speaking of specific projects. Well, I know we found 20,000 on the, the car paths, I believe, by using a different vendor and other areas. Our original numbers were found to be high and Jim has done a good job being able to go to some of these vendors and reduce the actual quote that we got down. And this is where I believe we're going to find the money to be able to do these to the AC projects. Am I correct, guys?
Yep.
Yeah.
You are.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Jim? Excellent. We can then move on to, I think, Paul, the golf pro is next.
All right. Thank you. Well, everything is going really great at Oak Hills. In fact, I've been here 12 years. I can honestly tell you, all of you, that I've never seen this place busier. The last two Mondays are always a quiet day. Usually at Oak Hills, we didn't have outings in August and Mondays were packed. So our reputation out there, people are coming from all over. I have some really good golf now numbers to share with you. But it's just really going well. Our course is in great condition. The weather's been pretty good overall. We've had some rain, but it hasn't inflicted our course so much. We're seeing an abundance of golfers on our tee sheet and we need to see many new faces and an incredible number of junior golfers and young adults playing at Oak Hills Park. Golf Now has driven a tremendous amount of golfers to Oak Hills Park and they keep coming back, which I can contribute to. New golfers, new people moving to our area. Reasonable rates and great course conditions. Everybody loves our greens. The word is out. Our utilization rates continue to remain over 90% almost every day. I have some good numbers I'll share with you maybe tomorrow, the next day through Golf Now, but we've made almost $100,000 this year, up 5%. Some of the other part of the country's down because of the rain. And since January 1st of 21, we have generated $407,285 through Golf Now. I'm going to send you this map I have here. It's just incredible. These people are coming from Seattle, San Fran, San Jose, LA, San Diego, Denver, Nashville, Cincinnati. And this one map is showing me an incredible amount of people from Westchester County, northern Westchester, Rockland, Suffolk County, parts of Manhattan and the Five Boroughs. It's just amazing. People are driving, you know, an hour to get here. So things are really going well. Our golf course now that sunlight's changing, we're open at 8:30. We close at 6:00. The golf show bulb is at 6:00 and closes at 6:00. This is the first year we've kept this tee sheet open longer because there's such demand to play golf here. We got people teeing off at 6 o'clock and they're only getting to play for an hour and a half right now. It's about getting dark. But they're still coming. So it's great. We got a lot of new golfers. They're happy to play six holes and then walk right to the cart. The last 30 days, we had two golf outings went really well. 100 Club was new, their first outing here. They've already booked for 2024. They're out of Stanford and O'Neal's Pub had the biggest outing of the year with 140 golfers. We usually capped it at 136. All of our outings have enjoyed and have really been impressed by our digital scoring with golf genius. Just makes the game somewhat more fun. It's bringing us into the, you know, the new century and thank you, Steve Shepherd, for your help there. We've had 13 outings, 1,353 golfers. We have six more outings to go. We are going to have possibly a new outing after Aeration October, which we've never had before. And we're already booking a new outing next year in August, which August is always a slow month. The Oak Hill Men's Golf Association and the Women's are in their 16th week of tournaments. And again, these golfers and our members love the digital score and everyone's used to it now. Everybody loves it. Bobby Tremboli, our Norwalk local, won the men's club championship for the fourth time in seven years. His brother TJ won the other three years. So we got some good stuff going on with the Tremboli brothers. Kristoff Papas won his first senior club championship. We had our first inaugural member, member. Some people say it wasn't going to work. We had 64 teams. Shows how popular that was. Bob Pasini and Paul Majewski won that. Our women's club championship and the junior club championship are coming up in September. And we are also starting our first Ryder Cup here at Oak Hills Park. And as a golfer, I can tell you in the business a long time, it's one of the best tournaments that a membership can play. Lot of fun. This week we started our last junior golf school of the summer. It's been really busy. Kids are really playing golf. We've completed 27 of 43 golf clinics. A big improvement to our teaching has been the new synthetic artificial turf tee at the range. And it's given our new golfers a much better learning experience and it really looks a lot better. Year to date, we sold over 1,250 memberships and the greens fees and the cart revenues are well over last year's total year to date. So things are good. We also discounted our golf memberships last July. We reduced them 30% to try to attract some new golf members who ordinarily would not have joined so late in the season and we definitely got some new members. Skate off carts in their third year, I believe, and they're really running well, good shape. And basically in our staff, this is a tough time of year. We start to lose a lot of people. So we're trying to get new hires. But we have eight people in the inside staff, 20 on the outside staff. Three members in the inside staff, lost seven members of the outside staff. And we hired a couple of new members and we are at 28, down from a high of 38. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything you'd like to know.
Paul, I have a question. Have you talked to other golf courses around friends that you know? Are they, are they having a good year? Are they busy too?
I would say
That you know.
Overall, everywhere we're fairly busy. COVID has been really good to golf. People like us, we're on Zoom more. It's allowing people to play more golf. The five day work week is kind of a thing in the past for a lot of people. So golf, and even though the economy is, you know, worried about the cost of living, but they're still coming. There's actually some incredible golf world that we see magazines that the sales of clubs, shoes, shirts, all those incidentals are down, but golf rounds are up and the sale of golf balls are up. So that means people are playing. They might be holding on to the old clubs or they're holding on to their shirts or new old shoes, but they're playing golf. So there's a lot of factors. It's been really good for Oak Hills here as well as our neighbors. And I will say, well, you know, it's expensive at these other clubs, the memberships, the greens fees or guest fees, and we're seeing a lot of people from the private clubs bringing guests over here or they're just coming here to play golf because they love our greens and our course is challenging and you know, it's just a great other place to play. So and obviously too, I'm sure Jim could talk about it a little bit, but we're seeing some really nice improvements here at Oak Hills and I know a lot of our coffee public has seen those improvements as well. Things are good.
Nice report. Thanks very much, Paul. All you do.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Paul? All right. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks.
And moving on to the superintendent, Jim Shell.
All right. So we had a stretch of wet weather and in my opinion, the course suffered a little bit. Nothing drastic though. I mean, it's all recoverable. July, I think we had over six inches. The average is a little over four. And so far in August, we've gotten four and a quarter and the average is three and a half just for the whole month. So yeah, it's been difficult, but you know, we're going to save a little money on water this year. But there's definitely no shortage of plant protecting applications. So I'm probably going to have to make some purchases to finish out my season. It shouldn't be anything drastic, but it's gonna be there. So on Friday, we had a heck of a rain Friday, early morning overnight. And we opened the course on time. And as I was looking around at the washouts in the bunkers, I was by three green and somebody hit off the tee, landed on the green. And about a quarter of an inch of the ball was sticking up out of the green when it landed. I mean, a lot of courses local to us closed. And I'm thinking next time, if it's that bad, that I may also, I mean, we, before that rain, we were wet. So after that rain, we were extremely wet. It's just it's a nasty condition. And I think if we, you know, didn't open until 10 o'clock, I don't think anybody would have any qualms about it because everybody else around us was closed till 10 or noon. So speaking of the bunkers, we've, we've taken some old sand out and put some new stuff in on a, on a few bunkers. We did number three. We're in the middle of number 13. I'm waiting for a new load of sand. But I think anything beyond that, I think is a waste of money because then we start getting into bigger bunkers and they were going to require several loads. Maybe I'll skim one of the real bad ones with what we have left over with this next load. We'll see. Staffing as our college kids return to school. We've gotten a couple of new staff onboard here, one with golf experience and one who used to own his own landscaping business. Hopefully they, you know, work out all right and become long-term guys. Being able to attract people with at least relevant experience comes down to wages, plain and simple. I mean, nobody's even going to look at this place to come and do this work unless they're a college kid for what we were paying even just last year or the year before. And you know, it's just a fact now that other courses are way more competitive than me as far as wages are concerned, especially the private courses. And it's just something I have to get used to. That's all. Other than that, I really don't have too much else to say. If anybody's got any questions, shoot.
I actually have a question, Jim, about the update on the, on the, how are you doing finding a netting installer for the 18th tee in that house? That was on last year's or last month's report.
We do have one quote. I think we're waiting on a second. Have you received anything yet, Jim?
Correct. Haven't received it yet, Jim.
Okay.
Jim, I have a question.
Sure.
You think you have time next week to go over the watering system with me so I can see how it operates?
Sure.
Okay, and
Yeah, you know, something I, I saw, so I read somewhere that they hired out an irrigation company to maintain it this year.
I don't know if they hired out or if they just, I'm not sure how they
We didn't get one call, which is
There was, there was an irrigation company. I gave the details to Jim. They were there fixing something with some of the heads that were broken about a month ago. So they were using a, an irrigation company. I got the name and I, I gave it to Jim. So he had it, especially after the leave.
I, I thought I was getting away with one this year.
What'd you say?
I thought I was getting away with one this year. No calls.
Um, another question, Jim. You said, you know, when they put the patio down, you said that you had, there were wires underneath the patio?
There were, yeah.
What are those wires for?
To control the irrigation system.
They are? Okay. So they're electrical?
Uh, yeah, uh, low voltage electrical, twenty-four volt.
Okay. So they connect somewhere to the beginning of the courts there, something like that?
Right. Uh, a portion of them go to the two court, like between the two and six courts. Most of them cross the six courts to the other side where all the excuse me, the electric valves are on the golf course side of the fence.
They go underneath all the, okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim, when you get damaged like that on a green, which I assume well, I guess the, maybe the rest of the course would have dried out. So maybe three is the only one that's really at risk. But no, I mean, on a pro shot, then anything is at risk.
That day, the entire course was, I mean, in the morning on the tees, people were standing in water to hit them. And really, I mean, we shouldn't do that to customers. We should just say sorry.
Well, we shouldn't do that to customers. It's not a good golf experience, but it's also the course. It's, it's not irreparable damage, but it takes time and effort and treasure to actually repair all that. So kind of no one's winning. Um, so yeah, I mean, it's, I know it's always a delicate balance. It's almost, it's almost akin to like, you know, um, delaying school or canceling school when it snows or something like that, right? But um, always a little bit difficult, you know, I guess. Live and learn. Um, kind of get more precise at it.
Just a couple of hours to dry down after that much and that long a stretch of wetness.
Yeah, okay. No, no question. I was just kind of exploring the idea a little bit, but yeah, nothing to do. Okay. Any other questions for Jim? All right. Let's move on to the good news from Mark Gartner.
Um, well, I finished uh, our, our year end close went very smoothly. The audit went very smoothly. Uh, they were in and out in a day and a half. Uh, of course, there's always follow-up and so forth, and there's a big audit report to do, which I'm starting to work on now, but uh, the good news is that I've heard nothing uh, in the last few weeks since they've left, which is good in the sense that uh, there's no questions that'll come up from upper management uh, in their review process. So I'm pretty safe to say, it's pretty safe to say that are, are the numbers that you've already seen are the final numbers. Um, so over the next few weeks, I will work with the um, audit manager on the audit report. We go back and forth several times. We fix this up, we fix that up. Uh, and then it goes in for partner review, which has been a little bit of a snag in the past few years. Uh, we've already discussed it. I'm hoping it doesn't bottleneck there this year. Um, but uh, we should be, we should be receiving a report sometime, hopefully in September. Um, at which point we will pay our one percent gross fee, uh, gross, gross rel- uh, revenue fee to the city of Norwalk on top of uh, our regular monthly payments. Any questions on the audit or the end of the year or anything like that?
Just maybe that mark the next steps, kind of what's the process to complete the audit?
Uh, well, like, as I said, it's, it's, it's really the report at this point. It's the, it's the report. Um, it's me writing up the report. Uh, and there's a lot to it, right? There's footnotes, there's the financials, there, there's uh, things that are presented differently on a financial, on an audited financial report than I have in my books. There's one or two blurbs in there that are purely for governmental, which is not my forte. I depend solely on the auditors to have a partner review who is a, a government guy who comes in and says, you need to put this paragraph in there. And I say, okay, that's good. Um, and then there is some last minute uh, um, uh, actual, you know, field work or, or substantive work to be done in regard to uh, whenever we're just about done. Uh, they ask us for uh, a little more of our activity that we've had since year end. Just to make sure they do kind of a subsequent event review, uh, meaning uh, past June thirtieth of this year to look at this current year, just to make sure that there's nothing that they missed on the other side. That's how that goes.
And then once that's done, it's partner review on their side and
Partner review period, yeah, partner review, uh, it, it, it um, which takes a little bit of time. And then um, and then once that's all done, uh, any last minute questions, they issue a management report, which is basically has some suggestions for us. That, that's part of their job, you know? Hey, we think you can get a little bit better here. You can make some improvements there. Sometimes some internal control improvements, which we know small company like us, we're always gonna have some segregation of duty issues and so forth that really it, it's hard to address, but um, they at least added in there to say, here's, here's some weaknesses that we see. Um, and then, and then the actual report is issued and then everyone shakes hands and we walk away until next year.
And we pay one percent. Okay, got it.
Um, yeah, in addition to that, I just, um, as I wrote in my report, um, I, I took the annual budget that was uh, approved in the June meeting and I just spread it my month by month. So we have actuals to, actual versus budget to look at. And that's based on just, uh, you know, historical uh, data, basically averaging that. And then it's adjusted by any anomalies, whether past or present or future. Um, and I will be sending that out to everyone, um, especially to uh, to, to Jim and Paul. Uh, so you can kind of manage your own budgets throughout the year, month by month. Uh, if you have any questions, once I do that, please feel free to ask me. We'll, we'll go through it. Um, anyway, besides that, we started off, I mean, you know, I think Paul already really said it. Uh, golf has continued to be good here. Um, the month of July, so this is one month now into our new year. Um, we, we, we beat, our revenue beat not just budget, but last year, which I was actually a little surprised at because last year was a very good year. Uh, you always want to budget a little conservatively, so you never know how it's actually gonna go. Uh, and it, it did go very well. Our, and even our expenses were, they weren't below, but they were right there at budget. So uh, I would call that a successful month on top of uh, the prior year successful month. Uh, it, we're, we're, we're looking good. Uh, and I think everyone has already seen this, everyone already knows, but our bank balance is doing very well in, in, in regards to our history. Um, so it, it really is smiles all around.
So I don't wanna rain on anybody's parade here. Um, but, and first of all, month is good, eleven, almost trying two grand, uh, twelve grand over our budgeted operating income golf was um, over about fourteen thousand dollars um, compared to our our budget, which is great. Um, and very good. But we just couple of little blips here. If you look at our Oak Hills sales analysis for the first month, now this is only a, a month and a month does not make a year. But the, the one, one and a half areas that, one thing that I look at is the resident senior eighteen rounds. We were twenty-seven percent behind this month compared to last month. So, you know, we did about eight of an eight rounds for the seniors in July and five hundred and eighty-six this year. So two hundred and twenty-two less rounds for the seniors, which is twenty-seven percent down. And that reflects into about nine thousand dollars worth of revenue. So it looks like maybe it's too hard or, but the seniors were definitely down. Now, what made up for it was obviously the rest of the course, but that was just kind of a bit of a blip just for the first month. And, you know, um, golf now, great. It brings us a lot of money and it's great. The month of July, basically, the average round, um, the dollars per round in July last year was forty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. This year for the foot, month of July was thirty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. So we were twelve percent down in actual, um, what golf now people pay for rounds. I'm not sure what that meant, but um, you know, it, it did reflect on um, you know, uh, you know, being, you know, twelve percent down in pricing just for the month. But those are the only two things that I saw, um, Paul, on that, you know? And if you want to comment on that at all, less I was playing and, you know, um, on the golf now, average check, average dollars around down from, you know, forty-one sixty to thirty-six ninety-four.
And ask a question to Mark. Mark, a couple of questions. Who's doing, who's doing the audit?
The audit is performed by PKF O'Connor Davies.
Um, also, was there a, from last year's issue, do we have any kind of fee increases?
I'm sorry, it's hard to hear you.
From, from last year to this year? Um, you're talking about the number of rounds you're up in that kind of thing. Was there any kind of fee increase in the revenue or did we keep our fees the same?
Yes, uh, generally speaking, without going line by line, um, the, the average uh, uh, revenue round was increased about a dollar, some of them two dollars per category. Meaning resident versus non-resident, senior versus adult, junior and so forth. Uh, and then in addition to that, um, we, we sell uh, discount ID cards, which is a form of membership. Um, and, and we would, we would increase those, generally speaking, five to ten dollars each per, per, per ID card as well.
Okay, thank you.
So another, you're welcome. So even, so even if everything stayed stagnant in regard to, we sell the same number of ID cards, the same number of rounds, we would see a small incremental increase in our overall revenue.
Well, I can attest to one thing that uh, COVID has been really good with golf. And um, before I came here, I was, uh, you know, um, we have five golf courses in Seattle and uh, it just, you know, it was amazing how the revenues and the rounds went up. It was just, it's just amazing. So that, that is, that is a true, a true uh, reality.
Yeah, and, and Robert, I'll tell you, I, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't, I won't get stuck on this stuff to say very quickly, but uh, three years ago, when we did reopen after closing for COVID, we were in really bad financial uh, uh, straits. Uh, and, and within two months, we were, we owed four hundred and twenty thousand dollars and, and within two months of reopening, that was all paid off. Uh, it, it was, it was really impactful.
Yeah. Yeah, that's one good thing that happened.
Yes.
Not a lot of good things happened with COVID.
I wanted to reply to Alan. Uh, I'm thinking, talking about the seniors. I would say that maybe people are traveling more. I mean, they're retired. I, I hear a lot of people are really traveling. And if a golf course has been wet and we had to go to cart path only, uh, some of those seniors aren't coming.
That's, I was gonna add that.
And I will tell, I've been telling Mark and I've been telling Jim Holiday, this is like JetBlue. Someone doesn't take that seat, somebody else is taking it. And so if the seniors aren't playing, someone's gonna, are taking those tee times. And I'm sure Mark can give you some more numbers, but I looked yesterday and year to date this year, we're at one point one two eight million. Last year, year to date, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand in, in green fee revenue. Cart revenue, which is amazing. I know Mark was a little worried about cart fees earlier in the year. I looked yesterday, three hundred and forty-six thousand compared to year to date last year, two hundred and seventy-seven.
So just to clarify, that's, that's on a calendar basis.
Calendar, I go by
That's not fiscal, right, Paul?
No, I always go by season of the golfer.
Which, which makes, which makes a hundred percent sense to be honest, Paul. Absolutely.
Sorry.
And uh, I really did have a feeling there, you know, there are some of the people who aren't sure, but I knew this year would be better than last because we just see the direction this has gone with all these new golfers and people moving here and COVID's just been great for the game. So, and I think it'll only get better.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just end by saying, uh, with, with, with us building up our cash reserves, which has been great, uh, we do plan on reinvesting quite a bit uh, this year and prop most likely in future years as well into capital improvements on the, on the course. So any other questions?
Good report, Mark.
Yep, thank you.
Great report.
Thank you.
Hey, Mark, I remember there was one line item or maybe a group of line items in the monthly breakout of last year's budget that was kind of too flat or too lumpy and we were kind of missing budget and it was causing some wash in the statements. One, am I remembering that properly? And two, did you target that and fix it this time, if I am?
Uh, I, I believe there was part of, part of it was in uh, park maintenance versus park equipment. It kind of evened out throughout as the year went on.
Across the two, okay.
Across the two, yeah. In regard to this specifically with, with the Ag and Chem stuff, the grass treatments. It is hard and, and Jim could tell you, Jim, Jim does a lot of early orders, which will be coming up soon, like usually around the October timeframe. It doesn't get delivered until April or, or, and we don't pay it until May, June, July. So the timing of some of these invoices is actually hitting and when the product, product actually gets here. I, I budget by month and if it, it's off, it looks like, hey, we have a thirty thousand savings and then next month, oh, we're thirty thousand dollars over. So it, it can be a little wonky month, month to month.
Yeah, no, I'm not worried about that. And I know there's some unused that gets accounted for in that, in that category and all that stuff. So, okay. It wasn't a big thing. I just, um, it was in the back of my mind, so.
But, but this year, just to be clear, it sounds like based on Jim's report, we, and, and just everyone knows the weather. We're, we're most likely gonna be under expense, under budget on water and will be over expense on the Ag and Chem line, which, which will counteract some of the bacterial growth that, that happens from, when
Mm-hmm.
Fungus.
Fungus, thank you.
Fungus. Different, different organism.
Yeah.
Fungus, yuck.
I'm with you, Denise. All right. Anything else for Mark? All right. If nothing else, we can keep going. Um, and that's gonna be the end of the management reports and we can keep going into committee reports and we can start off with Denise and tennis.
Okay, um, so I have kind of two different reports tonight. Uh, there are two different things that I'd like to talk about. Um, and, and one of them is the uh, meeting that took place with uh, King's Highway. Um, which I was not invited to. So in lieu of that, I have a couple of things that I'd like to kind of re-discuss that I've seen on the notes here. Um, and so there was a whole discussion here on one of your bullet points, Jim, about, you know, adding social events, which is something that is actually written as part of their lease. And, you know, you talked about Friday night socials and maybe adding a ladder. And the King's Highway was supposed to organize this. Um, just to make it a point, um, we have just completed three years of a lease with King's Highway and in their lease, item two J is they are requested every year to do social events. And they have not offered any social events as of now. So now we're going into the fourth year for their lease and they have not complied as of yet. So, you know, we keep bringing it up every year. It's part of the meeting discussion. It's in the lease, but nothing ever happens. All of the social events that occur at King's Highway, I mean, I'm sorry, at Oak Hills for the summer are totally sponsored by volunteer people from the Friends of Tennis. I mean, we have been the forefront of putting out the weekend drop-in things that Rich has organized. You know, we've had the, we've had two or three tournaments. We're gonna have another tournament in September for uh, Labor Day. And, you know, it's just been really non-existent from King's Highway. So um, and I find it very frustrating that we're going into a whole nother year with them kind of at the same level of, of nothing happening. And um, in the meeting notes, I didn't see any request for a financial report, which was something that is also in the lease, which I would have liked to have seen come forward from them for the season. Um, which is something that I feel is important to see kind of how they wrap up their season. And uh, the third thing I wanted to mention, because I don't see it in the report, that maybe there was more talk about it, is the uh, ladies league. Um, you know, the ladies league is a huge uh, program that they run. It is substantial. They probably bring in, you know, with the three teams charging for the fees to uh, join the team, charging for the passes. They probably bring in about sixty to seventy-five thousand dollars of, of income of revenue for them. So it's a substantial program beyond their clinics and their privates. Uh, that's pretty much what makes up everything that they do. Um, because they don't offer any drop-ins. That's what uh, the tennis friends does. So I, I, you know, I find their ladies program kind of on the frustrating side, the way that certain things are managed. Um, uh, I've talked to, you know, I was the captain for the C team. I've been the captain for eight years. I did resign this year. And I decided that I kind of wanted to just sit back and not be involved, but um, I've talked to the B team captain and she's extremely frustrated too with how things get managed. And what I mean by that is that there are a lot of uh, ladies who get put on the teams who are really not qualified for certain levels that they're put on the teams for. You know, we're trying to be competitive and so it's not coming across that way because You know, we're trying to be competitive and so it's not coming across that way because, you know, if we don't have people who are certainly have some qualifications, who can play doubles, who have some strategy, who, you know, we need women who don't just pick up a racket in May and put it down in September. We need people who play all the, all year long. And sometimes I feel that, um, the teams just get filled up for uh, taking a space, you know, and receiving the, the money, if you understand what I'm saying, right? Um, so, you, you know, it's, it's a big thing that didn't get mentioned, or if it did, it's not in the notes. So, uh, it's something that I feel is a pretty important way for the way that they manage things. Uh, the only team that runs pretty self-sufficient is the A team. They're a very high-level team. They're four O and plus players and they don't let anybody come on their team that they do not want. So they kind of run their own little show. They've brought, they've won for the past three years. They're very successful. They kind of put us on the map as far as, uh, the Ladies League is concerned because, you know, you can boast about them instead of the C team and the B team. You know, so I find that a little frustrating too. And, um, I think, you know, I mean, just to mention about the frustration for the ladies teams, last year, the B team had a, a very unfortunate way that they handled things and ten ladies left the team right at the beginning of the season. So, you know, it's not just kind of our, my level C team, it's also the B level. So there, there seems to be a reoccurring problem. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there and, um, wanted to just make sure that, you know, there were certain things that weren't covered at the meeting. And unfortunately, so putting that aside, unless anybody has any questions.
I'd say goes on the teams. Is it, who decides? Is it, is it the, 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 the players themselves, the captain and getting together? Or is it the pro saying, I want these people, you're good enough and stuff like that? How does that happen?
So, so what happens normally is that, you know, there is, um, in the springtime, they send out to the people who were previously on the team. So they're like, we, we come in as the first choice. So, you know, there's a rollover of people who are invited back to the team. But there's always a, a variety of slots that are open. Now, um, what I had requested many times is that we have more vetting of the players that come onto the team by our pro. So, you know, doesn't really happen that I'm aware of because sometimes we have ladies that come on the team that really are unequipped to be on a tennis team. You know, they should be taking clinics, which is fine for them to learn a whole lot of things, but they shouldn't come on a team expecting to learn how to play tennis. Uh, that should just be a given that they already have that ability. So, you know, I brought in people that I have recommended and so they come in, they have, um, participated in a practice and then they wind up being on the team because, uh, you know, of their level. But a lot of times when, uh, ladies don't return, there's just empty spots and there's kind of a push just to put anybody on there. I mean, that's just my feeling and that's how the captain for the B team feels too. So it's not.
After the B team isn't choosing the players and it's the, it's the pro that's choosing the players to go on the B team. It's not the captain.
No, I think it's the management who's, um, finding players to be on the team. I think it's like, when I say that they send out emails to ladies, you want to be on the team, you want to be on the team or people come and contact King's Highway, because all the registration is done through King's Highway. So they come and contact them and they'll say, you know, well, yeah, we have three spots open, so we're looking for players. But those players should be vetted. You know, there should be some kind of, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes on the court with them and you can kind of figure out if they should be on the team or not, you know, and we're a competitive league, which we play twelve other clubs, so we really want to improve. You know, we don't want to kind of stay at the level that we are, so it's a struggle. I find it a struggle. So, have any other questions?
Oh, I was at the meeting. I'll just, I'll comment about the, the social events. I brought that up because I, I do see that as weakness for King's Highway doing. We talked about it quite a bit. They seem to make an effort to, uh, do more for next year. We'll see how that goes. It's the first time I've brought it up, so I, I don't know about the past. Um, the financial report, I'm sure will come out at the end of, of, last year was the middle of October after the season was over. So I don't think they can give that to us until the season's over. And I'm pretty sure it'll come out again, as it did last year. And, uh, and sorry.
Did you request it?
No, we didn't, but I just expected, so I can happily request it. I'm sure we'll get it. Um, um, the other thing about the teams is maybe, I, I, I think, you know, Jim's a survey, you know, maybe something, uh, you can do in terms of surveying the, all the teams, A, B and C, and see what, uh, the issues are with the teams. I only know members of the A team and I know they're, one talked to me about it recently and said they were delighted with the program. Uh, I don't know. I've never talked to someone about B and C, but it'd be good to get more information from more of the members.
Okay.
And Denise, I certainly note your, your points.
I mean, I, thank you very much. Okay, so I'll move on on a positive note because I'm very happy the fall program for the youth that, um, is being put together and I'm having it advertised with the Norwalk Public School System and through the, um, uh, Paul, I've been working with one twenty one marketing and they're being great. I've been, um, so happy with them. They've been so responsive. You know, any little thing that I need, any kind of correction and, you know, it's done like within twenty-four hours. And so, um, I've got nothing but praise to say for them. Uh, so they, and they've been circulating, um, I don't know if anybody gets the blast, but they've been circulating the blast for the youth program too. But, um, the Norwalk Public School System has been, um, very helpful. I've got about twenty, uh, registrations so far and I got a lot more people who have been emailing me and speaking about it. So, um, Chris Mayout's going to be running the youth program. Uh, so those are going to be all, uh, after school, Monday through Thursday. And then, um, we're going to be doing some adult drop-ins on the weekends, which will be very early before the, um, Tennis Friends drop in, so it won't interfere time-wise. And then we're going to also add, uh, Chris's, Chris Mayout's working very hard to put the USTA Youth Tournaments together on Saturday afternoon. Uh, he's volunteering a lot of time. That's, um, quite cumbersome to kind of get through all those steps to organize it, but, uh, we're making progress. And we have two, uh, representatives from the USTA that we're working with, so I'm really happy with that. And, um, I guess I'm not sure about the grant money. I know that we were told we have it. I don't know where that stands and so I'll have to work with Chris Halsey when we finally see him to see, um, where that money is, if it's in limbo someplace or they're waiting something from us before they actually send it. I know Jim, um, Holiday, you and I were going to get together, um, to maybe work on that report, uh, for to send to the USTA. We have like a follow-up report to submit some information. So if you think you can help me do it, that's fine. If not, you know, I'll work on it with, um, either by myself or just, uh, get help with somebody else. So, uh, but it's probably necessary to follow up with that report so that they have whatever information that they need. So. And, um, I guess, Rich, I don't know if you have any update for the pergola?
No, it's kind of in Jim's hands now, so I don't know. I've kind of turned it over since Jim's there and he's been turning it over and I'm like, so, I don't know, Jim, do you, you know, the update of getting the subcontractor for that, uh, foundation?
The pricing and materials for the carpentry and the steel, I actually handed over the permit today to John Kuchko, who will be the general contractor. And, uh, the masonry is, is, uh, the mason, uh, is, uh, has yet to find the time to come over to give estimates for, uh, sinking the footings. So that's where we stand. Uh, I asked John if he could give me any more sense as to when and he really couldn't at this point. The only thing he said was once they get, once they get started, it'll only be a couple of weeks before, uh, it is constructed, but I will remain in communication with him and I said to please make sure that I know when the mason's going to be on site. Uh, the only other information is he needs to revise his insurance certificates for us and, uh, for his subs.
Jim, I just, I did want to clarify, did you say they ordered materials or they put a, I, I, I missed that?
Yes, I did say that, Rich. They have, uh, purchased materials.
Okay, is that steel and the, um, slats for the, the top?
They purchased the steel and the wood.
All right. Oh, thanks. I know, uh, just one other thing, Jim, uh, what about, I know in terms of the USTA money, Mark, you may be, answer this. I don't think we ever got that USTA Connecticut five thousand dollar check, right?
Still waiting.
Yeah, oh, okay. And Jim, what about the fence proposals? Where are we with the fence proposals around? Cause I know that, I think Chris Halsey wanted to submit some fence proposals to the USDA for the, the bulk of the national money.
Where we are, Rich, is, uh, I have sent a revised RFP based on the proposals from Oval Tennis and from Yukon Fencing, uh, to Oval, the company that originally bid. Uh, two other tennis companies, Putnam and Hinding, and also a, uh, a large fence company called Atlas Outdoor. They used to be known as Atlas Fencing and it was met with Jim Shell and I, uh, last Friday. Um, uh, Patton Tennis told us that they are unable to bid because they've got work for two years. I haven't heard from Hinding nor from Oval. So, uh, I, I, I suspect that we are going to, and I do have an updated proposal based on the revised RFP from Yukon Fencing. They increased their price by about a thousand dollars. Um, and I suspect that we will have a, uh, a proposal from At- Atlas Outdoor early next week at the latest. And I wouldn't be at all surprised if we don't get proposals from the other companies, but I'll keep you posted.
Jim, I don't think you'll get anything from Hinding because Hinding recommended that we go to Oval. So they, they really did, they were very high-priced, so I don't think that they're gonna, and they've already given us a proposal in the past and they've kind of updated it again in the past. So I think they feel that maybe they've, you know, done their proposal for us, so. And it won't be cheaper because they were the highest priced, so it'll definitely be higher.
Thank you.
Um, I'm finished. Thank you. If anybody has any other comments or questions?
Anything else for Denise?
Um, I do have a question for Robert. Hi, Robert.
Yes.
I was just wondering, I saw that you're also offering a youth tennis program this fall.
Yes, we are. And we offered it this summer. We also offered it this summer.
I thought I saw something for September, no?
No, we didn't. We offered it in September. We offered it this summer as well.
Okay, has it, how's it?
If you need any help, if you, if you need any help with, I know the schools, the schools are helping you, but if you need any help from us, you know, um, from, from, uh, our recreation system, we would be happy to help.
Thank you very much. Um, I just thought, since I saw your program being offered, that it would kind of be competitive to ask you to advertise for us. So I didn't, um, you know, but, um, do you, uh, that's kind of you. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Um, I just have a question. Can, can we ask who ran the program for this Parks and Rec? Who, who was doing your program?
Uh, uh, I don't know that I can. My, my recreation super.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
But they're also doing our, um, we have two pickleball, uh, instructors too out, one in Woodward, one in Matthew. And, uh, we're.
Alan and Tina, they're great.
Yeah, and so we're going to be doing some more, um, pickleball courts. We're doing one at Rollaten. And, um, we just got the bids in for that. We'll be doing, doing, um, uh, I think two more after that. So, in our capital.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on tennis? If not, then we can move on to the restaurant and I see Lisa's still on and Alan, is there anything you'd like us to?
You know, Joe, I, I've been thinking about this from a big picture point of view, um, this restaurant committee. And now we have a general manager, um, Jim Holiday, who is basically on the premises and is there all the time. And, um, has built a relationship, you know, with, with the Dry Duck Smoking Ace with Lisa and with Don, they communicate very, you know, uh, with each other with issues that are going on and stuff like that. Um, so I, I just wonder, and I'm just throwing this out about, you know, you know, the restaurant committee, you know, when it was, when we didn't really have a lot of, you know, management, et cetera, at the time, I was kind of, you know, answering questions and, you know, being a bit of a fallback person, not really a committee, which is my fault. I didn't really co-opt anybody. So, you know, I just wonder, off the top of my head, now that we do have a GM, um, who has this relationship with Dry Duck, uh, you know, with, with our concession, um, whether we, we, you know, we can keep the committee as an oversight, but obviously a lot of it now is of, of the work has been done by Jim, which I think is, is the way it should be, Joe. So I just, and I have nothing to report on the committee at this, but this time, but that's just something that I've been thinking about moving forward.
Well, yeah, I mean, the committee being past its useful life, I think, uh, is a report in and of itself and we, maybe let's, let's, let's talk offline about, um,
Yep.
winding it down. Based on our bylaws, the, the committees, uh, are formed and can be rolled up, uh, at the pleasure of the chair, so, um, I can certainly do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's catch up.
Yes. Yes, I had time.
Hmm.
That's a bit.
Uh, okay, um, anything else, uh, about the restaurant? We do have Lisa, if anyone has questions. Or Lisa, if there's anything else you'd like us to know.
Um, I just want to say that overall, the halfway house has been doing really great. It's very busy, extremely busy. Um, sales, sales per day sometimes is almost two thousand dollars for the halfway house, which is really, really great. The cart is, is doing really good. Um, we had a few mishaps with the cart. We had to have them come out and fix it a couple of times because it broke down in the middle of the course. So that's the only, um, problem that we have with that, but the restaurant is doing okay. We don't get the traffic from the golfers. We don't get the support from the golfers as much. Only if it's like really, if it's a thunderstorm outside, everybody rushes in and then we'll make a lot of money, but other than that, um, we do have our regulars that come in every day, regular golfers, but other than that, it's not busy at all. Um, that's pretty much it.
Uh, Lisa, I have a question for you. Um, the cart that, uh, you drive, the cart is, uh, you drive it all around the course, right? And you offer beverages and, uh, what snacks for the golfers?
Yes.
Yeah, um. So if we wind up on a Saturday afternoon, having a tennis tournament for the USTA, would that be something that we could do is get the golf cart to come in and, you know, there'll be a lot of parents there uh, with their kids? And, uh, we were trying to figure out if we wanted to offer some food or some kind of snacks or something for them. Is that something that would be possible?
Um, what time did you, because we, the cart is out on the golf course from pretty much ten to seven.
Oh.
Yeah.
It just keeps driving around?
Just drives around, yeah.
Well, if you want to have a drive over and hit the tennis center every.
They can do that a little bit.
Oh, I don't know. Um, the, we, the tournaments will probably start at two o'clock in the afternoon and I don't know what time they're going to finish. I guess it depends on the, how many kids we get, but, you know, they could go till six or something like that. So.
I can make a suggestion there, uh, by our eleventh tee box, there's a gap in the wall. If they were willing to do that, I'm sure it'd be very beneficial to them. You could take that beverage cart as you're touring the golf course and just make a sidetrack right through that wall, take a right into the tennis courts. I think it would only take ten minutes.
Yeah.
Then you could be back on the course.
I, I think Denise, you, you, you could do beverages there, uh, maybe some potato chips and, you know, it's grabbing ghost stuff, but there's going to be no like, you know, food, no sandwiches and stuff like that. I think that would be too much, but I think only from a beverage point of view.
I, I don't want to offer a lot of food. I want to keep it simple. I want to keep it just like maybe juices, Gatorade, water, chips.
I can, I can, I could, I can have one of our, the staff go over there and set up like a little table and put the stuff out there for you. Instead of having the beverage cart leave the course.
Okay, well, um, I can get in touch with you and we can just talk more about that. How about that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Great.
All right. It sounds like a follow-up for me to, um, touch bases to Alan and see about the restaurant committee and then follow-up for Denise to reach out to Lisa and figure out the, um, snack, uh, concession for those tournaments. Uh, you know, I, I, I wouldn't necessarily rule out just yet, um, having the cart drive over because it's just so close. It's so close. Like Lisa, I don't know if you appreciate the geography of this, but it's like. Like Lisa, I don't know if you appreciate the geography of this, but it's like, it's right there.
Yeah.
It and it seems like a win-win for for everybody, so let's let's kind of pursue that as well.
Okay.
I just have a question for Lisa. I've always thought it's the tennis players don't really go. We have, we do have quite a few come at the drop-ins from ten to twelve on weekends. And I don't know, Lisa, I always felt if we could just have a coupon maybe to give to the tennis players and say, you know, twelve o'clock, here's ten percent off if you go over to smoking aces um. And maybe for golf, you could do the same thing. I I I think unfortunately, there's just, there's not a culture of going to the restaurant after playing tennis. And if there's anything we could do to jumpstart it, I I would, I I think you, I think you could, you could create a culture, but it does take some kind of spark to get it going.
Um, I remember Don offering to do something like that with the Pro Shop, but I don't know if anybody followed up on it. Would like if someone did a membership, they they'll get like a percentage off coming to the restaurant. I don't know if anyone followed up. I have no problem doing that. I can definitely offer.
I just think if we had, you know, even for the fall, if you had like, it's just a coupon that you could give us and we could say, oh, here's a ten percent coupon, British tennis, go over, consider having lunch. I could even advertise it through the, you know, the tennis uh emails that I sent out. Uh, if they, if there's some way you could honor that, I I and um I I think you could create uh some interest in tennis players to come over after uh tennis on on weekends for lunch.
And also we have a great happy hour menu.
Yes, yeah.
You, I see you all the time, so I can definitely show it to you when I see you again.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Sorry, couldn't get the uh um, the the zoom screen back up. Um, okay, uh. Moving on from restaurant, uh next would be supporters, but I don't see Jerry and I don't know if anyone else is qualified to give an update. So let's move to nature advisory and I don't see anyone from nature advisory, but I know Mark, you're involved, so do you have anything to uh report?
Uh, there's been no movement, to be honest, so I'll just say on a on a personal basis, uh I walked through the 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 nature trails the last two weeks. I seen two coyote, two deer, I saw a baby box turtle and uh there is a frog that is a mainstay at the fountain garden. So if you want to go see a frog, please go to the fountain garden, go go walk through the trails. It'll only take you a few minutes.
What's his name? Kermit?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, it's a great resource, so uh, you know, I hope everybody gets to use it at some point. Um, I'm not sure if we have to be concerned about those coyotes though, but um.
Uh, well, Jim can tell you and Paul, I guess, uh, there there's a family of six that are out there. They they have four pups and they've been people see them all the time. It's kind of like almost, oh, did you see the pups yet? You know, so it's
Yeah, yeah.
thing this year.
Okay.
And I know they they, I saw both parents and they both ran as soon as I was anywhere near them, so.
Yeah.
Not not a not a concern.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's plenty of wildlife that runs through the course in the middle of the night.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Nothing you can do about it.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Um, we are running maybe ten uh little more minutes over schedule, so um hopefully we can uh round out soon. Uh, but let's go to agenda item number seven, old business, new business, and I'm not sure item B is going to have much. Uh, but um let's get started off with item number, none, item number. Item A, uh, the interest-bearing account for cash balances. Gary, um, I think deputized Denise to give us an update on this. Is that right, Denise?
Well, I mean, we've had a a meeting. We had some conversation. We're looking into different things, but actually Monday, this coming Monday, Gary.
Coming.
Yeah, me and Gary and Mark will be getting together and um we'll be able to report better after that meeting, I think, so unless you.
Uh, well, we 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 had, we had met maybe three weeks ago to discuss our options. Uh, after, I think both Denise and Gary had met with uh uh several people in the finance department of 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 the city of Norwalk. Uh, and they had basically, the gist is they strongly discouraged anything that was market-based and uninsured and they strongly encouraged, very much recommended, we keep everything insured. What does that mean? It means keeping the bank where you have an FDIC insurance of two hundred fifty thousand dollars, don't do an overnight sweep. So we are very much going to keep in line with what they're requesting. The um, the, but all three of us was doing some homework to to review some different investment options and and well, that was Denise and 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 Gary did the heavy lifting on that and I was just talking with our bank and so forth, so uh as Denise said, we'll report more with some specifics by next month, but before then we will be doing some type of investing uh or just in improved uh return on our current uh bank balance, put it that way.
So there are a couple of deadlines coming up that Denise uh and myself are gonna have to to meet because um my last two meetings with the BET and with the Norwalk Finance Committee of the Common Council, I did say to them, because they've been kind of badger, not badgering me, but that we would have some form of um plan or some form of idea at the next two meetings in September. I think that the September meeting is, I'm not sure when it is, but we should look at our calendars. And I'd like, and Denise, I think you would also like, as the treasurer, and 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 myself, just to be able to have a little something to say, yes, this is what our plan is, this is what we think we're going to do, if that is possible.
Well, the meeting that it it's on Labor Day, so it's pushed that next week, so I think it's uh the eleventh.
Okay.
Uh, for September, so the, yeah, they rescheduled it for September eleventh, so I think that that would be when we would have to, you know, put more information forth.
And we'll 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 have, we'll we'll be meeting on the twenty-eighth this coming, this coming Monday, so we'll we'll have a at least a discussion uh before, well before the the next BET meeting.
That would be great.
My 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 guidance is we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cash, right, Mark?
More than that.
Wow. Um, ring fence, the capital expense expense um budget plus a buffer of ten percent. Leave that off the table for investing because we're going to be using that. Ring fence, the reserve account thirty-three. Not investing that. Take some portion of what remains that's reasonable under the FDIC limits, get into something. We're in zero right now. And we should be in something. Get into some, we're, sorry, one percent. Still, I think we can do better. I think we all, we're all doing better in our own accounts, I think.
Yeah, but we've learned is that there is a big difference between personal and business.
That's true. That's true.
That is true.
Big difference.
Personal.
Yeah.
Uh, what's offered is really like, oh, my gosh, can't believe how big of a difference there is.
Uh, yeah, and there's no no sense trying to hoodwink anything. Um, uh, let's get it into something, right? Um, i- if if it's breakable, um, that's fine because, you know, we can just move out of it very quickly. But it, we've got to get into something soon and to to Alan's point, you know, the people are noticing. Yeah. And, you know, to be honest, it's it's possible that we're not being efficient with our cash. We should be deploying it into investment as well, so we should entertain that idea. Okay, um, that, anything else Denise to add on that item or any questions for Denise?
Um, I I've seen to, I've talked with Karen twice. Once we had a meeting, Karen Vitale, she's um it's assistant controller, yeah, very nice lady, and we seem to have
With with Denise, with the city.
Oh, with the city of Norwalk, yes.
Okay.
Uh, we seem to have email problems because I've called her and she said she hasn't received my email. She was gonna like go to her tech people because she thinks they're bouncing back or whatever. I mean, they're not bouncing back to me, but they're maybe going in her spam. So it kind of, she was gonna send me uh information with the state of Connecticut on some uh investments that she felt would be good and they're all FDIC insured. So I was Googling with the state of Connecticut of all different things, but I don't think I've really found the right spot, so I, you know, I kind of think she's got a particular link for me to follow up with, so I'll I'll follow up with her again, um, try to figure out why um they're they're in the middle of bonding. So I guess that's a very big procedure. I don't know how long it takes. Um, so um that could be why I haven't heard back from her.
Okay. Very good on that item on seven A. On seven B, Jim Holiday, is there anything else that we want to talk about or any update that you haven't already given?
No, there isn't, Joe. I will have uh more proposals for review on uh at the September meeting.
Okay. Uh, at a special meeting, we're not actually allowed to ask for any new, new business that's not on the agenda. Um, which is um gonna bring us to item number eight, which would be adjournment.
I could just make one comment if I may.
Oh, yeah, yeah. At the chair's pleasure.
I'd just like to say so, she's welcome, Rob Stowers, to our, to our committee and our authority. Um, you know, the last couple of years we've had some conversations, uh, Robert, I think you being on board, our authority would be a great help to us. I think the more help and and cooperation between the city of of Norwalk, because you have great resources at Parks and Rec, great people working there. We have a jewel here in the city of Nor- Norwalk. And if there are any things that can be done on your end, you know, uh whatever it is or whatever, just, you know, with your experience to weigh in on things where we, you know, we can improve what we have would be be a great thing. So 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 just welcome on my part, Robert.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, I second that. I second that.
Yeah, I just like like to uh, that I believe in, you know, I believe in co- uh cooperation and collaboration. Um, I believe that, you know, all us all together can make things better. Um, so by us working together, we help each other, so I I've always believed in that and you know, and Seattle, uh, Seattle, I was probably most known for uh, you know, working with all the other departments to give me the definitely direction to work all together uh on our issues, so I believe in that. I believe that we all um are here for the advancement and the better will of of Norwalk and uh the cities of Norwalk, so. Well, thank you.
Very good.
Well, I look forward to meeting every, every last one of you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I encourage everybody to
In a most personal way and uh learning about what you, what you're doing, um uh, you know, what your roles are and how, you know, how you really what your responsibilities are. I kind of know it by um intuitively by what you talked about tonight, but I'd like to get a little bit more closer in depth, so. Seems like a good group.
We are.
We actually are. Um, all right, thank you, Alan. Uh, thank you.
Good meeting. Well, well done.
Yeah. Uh. Great, so could we get that uh motion to adjourn? Does anyone want to make it?
Motion to adjourn.
It's Mr. Dillinger. Anyone second?
Second.
Oh, okay, Denise seconds and any objection? Hearing none. Good night, everybody.
Have a good labor day.
Have a good labor.
Good luck, Alan.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good luck with the recovery.
Yeah.
Thanks.